Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the Henson Board of Appeals. The Henson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The Henson Town Hall Selectmen's Meeting Room on the application of Cushing Trails LLC for a comprehensive permit to allow for the construction of 44-sale condominium units in 20 duplex-style buildings on a 9.6 acre plus or minus pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40B and its implementing regulations at 1536, 5470, and 71 Williams Trail and 112535 Lisa's Trail. Henson assesses maps 117 lot 6-1, lot 6-2, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, 6-6, 6-7, and 6-8, and 6-R. Property is located in a residence A, double A zone. Just a quick introduction. This is our alternate, Mr. Manuti, Mr. Ferrari, our clerk, Mr. Buckley, our vice chair, and I'm Kevin Perkins, your chairman. Just some ground rules tonight. Everyone just try to have respect for everyone. Only one person talking at a time. We understand there's a lot of anxious people in the room, so if we could just try to keep it under control because if it gets out of hand, we're gonna have to just adjourn the meeting and continue it. So, let's try to get through it. What we're gonna do is I'm gonna read some comments from multiple boards that we have, and then we're gonna go to the presentation from the applicant, or his counsel, and then we'll get underway. We might, we might have time for, you know, butters in the public comments tonight, but we're really gonna try to get through the application process and get that going, and then if we have time today, we'll get to the public. If not, then we'll do that next meeting. But some of your questions may or may not be answered through the course of that, and that's why we're gonna do it in that order. So, what we have here is, this is from the Town of Hanson Planning Board, dated June 30th, to the Board of Appeals. The Planning Board on June 28th, 2021, reviewed the materials submitted for the above hearing and voted by a vote of 302 to recommend this project not be approved. Another letter from the Town of Hanson Planning Board to the Board of Appeals dated June 30th, 2021. The Planning Board on June 28th, 2021, reviewed the materials submitted for the above hearing and voted by a vote of 302 that the Town of Hanson, through the Board of Appeals, require of the applicant a reevaluation submittal of stormwater management, engineering, and apply the same reevaluation submittal to all septic proposals. This is a letter from the Town of Hanson Building Inspector. I have seen and reviewed the petition for Cushing Trails LLC, request for a comprehensive permit to allow for the construction of 44-sale condominium units in 20 duplex-style buildings. This office has no concerns regarding this proposal, however, building permits must be issued prior to the start of construction. This is a letter from Town of Hanson Fire Department, from Deputy Chief Robert O'Brien, dated June 17th, 2021. Dear Mr. Chairman, in regards to the applications submitted by yourself, William Cushing, we have found that the plans called for the street names to be Cushing's Trail and Lisa's Trail. However, in the announcement sent to the fire department, it lists William's Trail as a street name. The fire department has sent multiple letters to the town that this will not be acceptable. The town already has a William's Way located off of Brook Street. The hydrant locations on both streets appear to be acceptable, but that will need final approval from the water department. If there are any changes to hydrant locations, please notify the fire department. The design has enough turning radius for our Tower One at the end of the roads. If there are any changes to the buildings or street, please notify the fire department. Respectfully, Robert O'Brien. This is a letter emailed from Conservation Agent. Conservation has no comments on the Cushing Trails 40B project. Conservation Commission does not have jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act or the Hanson Wetlands Protection Bylaw. We will, however, review the septic system plans when received from the Board of Health as usual. And that was dated June 17th, 2021. That's all I have for comments from other boards, so I guess if you could, the applicant?
Sure. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Town of Board of Appeals. My name is Michael O'Shaughnessy, and I'm here to make the application.
Yeah, are you okay?
I can't hear you.
If you don't mind, sure.
Good evening, Chairman. I'm a member of the Town of Board of Appeals. My name is Charlie Michael O'Shaughnessy, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Henson Trails LLC. Yes, seeking a comprehensive permit from U. Flow, San Diego Law, Chapter 40B, to extract 40 units on a 9.6 acre plus or minus site. This site was previously approved as a lot subdivision, so waiting on the plan for units development on that whole parcel. With me tonight is Jamie Keller from Axiom Architects, he's the project architect. Joe Webby from W. Engineering, he's the project engineer. And Andy Rasson, which is with Anas and Associates, he's our traffic guy. So, the long and the short of it is, and I just wanna, I'll jump right into the project, so I'll be brief. There's three jurisdictional elements of accordance to be considered for us to have a proper application of authority. One is we have to be a limited juror, dividend and co-organization. So, what that means is the developers can create limited profits on the project. We're going to enter into a regulatory agreement with Mass Housing for that effect. Second component is we have to control the land in your package as a key and S between Cushing's Trail, we will be trusting Cushing's Trail LLC for purchase of the property. And the last component is we need to have a project eligible for our, we do in your package as well, dated May 11th, 2021, of Mass Housing. So, if all those jurisdictional elements satisfied, this application's probably with 40. At this time, I think it makes sense for Joe to just kinda jump up, give an overview of where we're at with the project, what's going on today, and build in there.
His attorney, Mike, has stated before, this currently is an eight-watt subdivision. It was approved by the Planning Board. And then now what we would like to do is incorporate all those lots into the 40B. The streets are in the same location, health sacks are in the same location. We're gonna be putting 20 duplex units. And you can see that they're arrayed around in the subdivision. And we still will be providing, we have drainage in this area, and these two areas that were previously approved by the Planning Board, both we have to look at a little bit in case they have to be enlarged. And also, we're gonna have septic systems that are gonna be common with, in this area or on that side. So then, so that will provide septic. All the utilities will be underground. Do you think, like, has anything else to say?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, it's gonna be a condominium form of ownership, the condominium association's responsible for taking care of the roadway and the common areas. I guess at this point, since traffic has been brought up as an issue previously, I think it makes sense for Andy, if you could jump up and just give a brief presentation to the board.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Andy Rasson, of Anas and Associates. We performed an assessment on the transportation impact associated with the proposed project. And tonight, I just wanna very briefly touch on some of the key findings of our report. Based on our investigations, we anticipate that the project will generate approximately 30 to 40 vehicle trips during peak morning and evening rush hours. These trips comprise of both entering and exiting vehicles, as you would assume for residential development. Most of the trips are going to be exiting in the morning, returning in the evening. These volumes are relatively minor and would not result in a significant impact on motor delays or vehicle fueling slower current conditions. We also investigated the motor vehicle crash histories within the study area. We did not discover any safety deficiencies within the area with regards to accident histories or trends. And finally, we investigated the lines of sight at the project site roadway at Spring Street. We found that all the lines of sight meet or exceed the minimum distances for safe and efficient operations. Again, I just wanna touch on some of the three points of our report, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thanks.
Could you just give us a quick overview as to, you know, what was done to obtain this report? You know, just kind of the process to walk us through this?
Sure.
Just, 'cause I, I mean, that was nice of you to sum it up for us, but this is a lot of reading for me to kind of, so, could you just kinda walk us through kind of the process and add to that?
Absolutely, yeah. As with any of our reports, the bulk of it is the technical details, which comprise the bulk of it. We obtained road two counts, ATRs, along Spring Street at the approximate location of the site roadway. We found a count, we adjusted the counts for the impact of COVID, and see, we did not adjust because it was above seasonal averages. And we estimated the volumes of trips generated by the project based on the Studio Transportation Engineer's Manual, the same as you standard for developing trip projections. We came up with, I mentioned, approximately 30 to 40 in the peak hours, about 450 over the course of the full day, two-way, 24-hour only, during accident. We looked at the public accident histories, and the road safety maps from the DRT and the registered vehicles provided. We did not find anything. I think we collected a total of four total accidents in and around the stretch of roadway from the project. Most of them were single vehicles, typically being fixed onto a pre utility pole, could be near a street as well, sometimes those get towered in there. We looked at the site distances at the driveway, just using Ashville, using the Safe Life standards for developing a stopping distance. You have safe and efficient distances with some of the clearing, some of the vegetation along the site that would most likely happen with the construction of the project. Other than that, I mean, we made a couple of recommendations. They're all basically just general recommendations that we typically do at any development.
What are your recommendations?
Specifically, we have, the project site roadway should be a minimum of 20 feet width, designed to accommodate the turning and maneuvering requirements of the Hanson Fire Department.
So, this was done on June 8th or June 9th?
Yes.
For a 24-hour period?
Uh, I believe it was a 48-hour period. Two days.
Okay, so it was?
Two full days.
Two full days, okay. It wasn't just one. Now, could you just, is there any other, like, Route 58, any other streets you could kinda just give us for reference that maybe you have a study on too? Just so we can kinda compare this with another major roadway, just to see in comparison how much busy or less busy that it could be?
I'm not sure I, of the, the law.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to reference your material, what you've given us, to something else that I may be able to, that's all.
I don't, I don't know of one along 58 that I've done recently, Mike. I'm not, I'm not entirely sure of, of, sorry.
Any other questions?
Can I ask you a question? Did you mention vegetation clearing?
Yes.
So, the frontage is actually really small there. Do you mean just at the frontage for this parcel, or beyond that?
Yes, it's just on the corner of the, of the curb, the driveway right now, there's a kind of a low lying shrub, and it's not removed, it's just cleaning up some of it. It's just kinda hanging in the sight lines.
Okay, so otherwise, off that frontage, you know, nothing topographically, or was the curvature of the road, obviously it's pretty straight there?
Yeah, no, the Spring Street itself is relatively straight, and there's no, no vertical curvature.
Yeah, so, without anything, I guess we'll come back to that.
Okay. I'm sorry, are you taking questions on?
Um, what we can do is, we can, we can come back to, you know, the public if you want, just save your question, just so we're not doing a lot of back and forth, if you don't mind.
So, Mr. Chairman, we spent a lot of time on the architecture of this project because, to me, that's where the project really sells, and that's where there's big benefits to the town. So, I'm gonna ask Chief to kinda show us the renderings, and show us the style of houses, and go into some of the design features.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jamie Keller, Axiom Architects, Axiom Handover. Much of what we do as an architecture firm is high-end residential design, although recently we have been a part of several very successful, popular, similar developments as this. So, when we were engaged by the applicant to potentially get involved in the project, he indicated that he was looking for a design approach that would be potentially a bit more complex, or detailed, a little more articulated than a lot of the similar developments that you can see in local areas. Because, yeah, let's face it, the development, you get a lot of buildings very close together, nobody particularly loves the look of these types of developments. So, from the onset, our approach was to try to give all the 20 buildings the most aesthetically pleasing variety and aesthetically pleasing architecture that we could within the given budget that we would have. And also to kinda create a site distribution that would, you know, give the development the look of, you know, more custom home type of look that we traditionally see in these type of developments. So, the first view is just a general, you know, idea of, you know, what the main street could look like for development of the proposed buildings that we have right now. The second image here is a little bit more, just, just a simple bird's eye view, or, you know, three-dimensional look of the buildings. Obviously, you can see different roofing colors, different colors on buildings, and different roof forms. So, just to briefly go through the design of the units, I just printed out just what we call the Building One. What we're proposing is, with the 20 buildings, we'd have four different building types that have a different look to each one, and they all have different combination of how the units. So, the development that have both two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, and this first building is actually a combination of a three-bedroom with the blue, and a two-bedroom with that sort of yellow color. First level, you get a little front porch, and at the rear, you get a small deck. And there would be a variation on the three-bedroom unit that we have at first floor, master bedroom suite, that would be something that could be an option for a buyer. Just to get into the elevations, just to kinda give you an idea of the look. Again, trying to create some detail with the different material types, the different colors, and some trim work that give it a little bit more of a contemporary New England style. So, that's the side here. Now, I'm a little bit out of order, but these are just large views of each of the four building types that we have. So, this is Building Two. That would be two three-bedroom units paired in the same building. As I forgot to mention, each unit has a single garage. This being Building Three, which would be a version with two, two-bedroom units together. Building Four is another version of a building that would have two, two-bedroom units together. And that's the first building that I showed with the combination of the three and the two-bedroom units together. So, as you can see, each one tries to bring in some variation of dormers, variation of the front porch entry. And that would be the end of my materials.
Which ones are the 40B units?
Um, and you mean affordable?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the?
Mr. O'Shaughnessy, could you respond to that? We haven't designated. They haven't been designated yet. They will be of the same, from my understanding, they will be of the same, you wouldn't be able to tell which one is which.
So, quality-wise, electrical plumbing?
Correct.
Structurally, they're identical, so standard unit?
Side farm.
No difference.
Correct.
How many?
How many different style units are there?
How many 40Bs?
Guys, if, we'll, we'll get all the questions in.
So, yeah, again, there are four, four different buildings, and again, the interesting thing, I mean, we see them all in one color, but using different colors within the same building type would give even more variety.
Right, so you have, you have four wayos essentially, what?
So, yeah, right now, the distribution that is proposed on the site plan is, there are two Building Twos, four Building Ones, six Building Threes, and eight Building Fours. Part of the uneven distribution is just hitting the proper bedroom count and making the numbers work out correctly. But I think we've found a way to disperse them on the site in a way that's really nice for it.
Now, were these all designated, the unit wayo designated prior to Mass Housing for their, their approval order, was that part of?
Uh, no, I mean, when we filed Mass Housing, it's just a general conceptual plan. These plans, we failed them, we filed with Mass Housing for our project, that was real good.
Okay. But Kevin, those counts, the amount of three-bedrooms?
Yes.
Required by, by Mass Housing, so they want to have some more family-oriented units, so sure, that's why a certain portion are almost three-bedroom, unless they ran the waiver.
Right, right. So, right now, we have eight three-bedroom units, two bedroom units. Originally, what we meant to Mass Housing was just propose four, but it seemed like the town was asking for more. So, we've laid it out. So, the plan that you have shows eight three-bedroom units, and the board said, no, no, we don't want eight three-one-four, we can go down to four three-bedroom units as well. So, it's been accounted for on the site.
And as far as the design goes, all the units have garages? They're all designed with garages?
Two-bedroom garages, slightly smaller.
Still adequate for an SUV. How much tall?
Two or two feet.
What's the dimension difference?
So, the width being 12 feet on each, and then the depth of the smaller one is 20 feet, and the larger is 22. So, it's just?
It's 12 on the exterior, bulk on the width was 12?
12, 12 is the interior.
That's interior.
With a 9-foot door.
And then it just, it's, you said what, 20?
20 feet and 22 feet.
You guys have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, so I think those are the general colors for the project that's available to us right now for the siding.
For the siding.
Right, siding group, so it's gonna be, so what you see is pretty, pretty, it's a pretty accurate representation of what you can see up there as far as color.
Roofing shingles too, I did notice you had some different color relationships on that, correct?
Yeah, you know, we try to get creative, sometimes certain color looks a little better with a lighter siding, so.
Yeah, you don't want it to look like army barracks, like.
Right.
And that's the intent, not to have it look like road.
Right.
No, I, I don't have any more questions, I'm sure we'll have some later, but.
Excuse me, do you have a site plan that shows where the structures are gonna be in relationship to the town lines and the street?
Yeah, we do, I can get you one, yeah, I mean, if you'd like, absolutely. You wanna go to review comments, just to, do you mind? We can just run through that real quick.
So, my name's Pat Brennan, the Henry Engineers. I peer reviewed the project for the full concrete half of the board, and submitted a letter to them last week. So, a number of comments, I'll just kinda run through the comments fairly quickly now, just to kind of, because obviously, there's gonna be some revisions that the plan that should address.
Yeah, if we could just go and put a overview on the whole thing.
Yep.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, my first eight comments are general roadway related. My first comment, you know, I mentioned that it's currently laid out as a eight-watt subdivision, as mentioned, with a carved-out roadway right away. So, I assume to combine all those lots, and it's actually recorded as a dependent subdivision right now, so those lots are actually, I don't know, they're gonna have to combine everything to make this work. There was a, I'm actually only gonna hit some of the more important comments. There was a stockade, six-foot stockade fence. Not only did I review this Chapter 40B's middle, but I went back and reviewed the plans I've approved for the subdivision, as well as the subdivision decision, so I know what those conditions were in that decision, so I read through those and kinda got a feeling of how that review process went. I didn't, I didn't review it for plenty of time. There's a six-foot high stockade fence that's proposed along, there's a property that is So, there's a property out front here, and there's a stockade fence along this property line, and then it looks like it's only about 35 feet along that one. In the subdivision decision, they're supposed to go all the way across the back bit, and obviously, that's to give some privacy to existing neighbor there. They need to submit, they soil the road and sanitation control plan. I'm sure you're familiar with the site, the site's already been, the roadway's basically been constructed to subgrade, drainage facilities have been installed, manholes, catch basins, like, and that's all been installed so far. There's three basins, like Mr. Webby had mentioned, there's a big one here, one here and one here. Those were all proposed for the subdivision roadway. The problem is, is that the drainage calculations that were submitted were prepared under the subdivision plan, not under this one, so they don't take into account, excuse me, all of the additional impervious area from the additional roofs and driveways. So, they need to update that drainage report and the drainage count so that we make sure that what's out there will actually work and mitigate any increase in the drainage. So, that's, that's really one of the bigger things. I brought this plan into CAD and traced the impervious area, and I'm getting about 100, almost 108,000. I brought this plan into CAD and traced the impervious area, and I'm getting about 100, almost 108,000 square feet of impervious area. And they only accounted for 76,000 in the drainage count. So there's a bit difference there that we're going to need to allow to address. Also, from the aerial photographs that I've taken a look at, as well as a site visit, it looks like there's a lot more clearing that's been done there than what was originally proposed in the subdivision. Not only that, but the... This area out here was proposed, shared septic systems, roofing, the leaching areas. On the old subdivision plan, a lot of that was to remain wooded. So again, with those drainage counts, they have to redo those, because obviously, when you take the roots away and add more impervious area, you get a lot more runoff. So... That's a lot of comments on the drainage. One of the other things that they've done with this is they have the, a four-foot sidewalk on one side of the road. And they're using tape card berms, they're proposing tape card berms. So you're going to have 22, well, 20-foot travelways, and then 12 inch tape card berms. So your asphalt's going to be 22 feet wide, except it's going to be another four feet wide of the sidewalk. Sidewalks with tape card berms, ready to have tape card berms, really, in my view, are not safe. There's no, there's no barrier there between the pedestrian and the vehicle. You know, a vehicle can very easily drive up on a tape card berm. So if you're going to have tape card berms, you should have at least a four-foot wide grass strip, or you go to a vertical curve that divides that actual physical barrier between the pedestrian and vehicles. One of the recommendations in the Bonnace report was no parking on the many streets. And I absolutely agree with that, because 20-foot wide street, if you let somebody park on the side of that road, it's going to be very difficult for emergency vehicles to get by. So there should be no parking, there should be signs specifying for parking up there. They did, and I heard, or I read the comment from the fire department, they did show the swept path analysis for these two turnarounds. Although they didn't show it for coming from this road onto this road, or from coming from Spring Street into the subdivision or into the project. And I just want to see that, just so that we make sure that those roadways will, you know, that the largest fire apparatus can actually move across those corners. The subdivision plan also showed a berm with a grass rail kind of in this location. My assumption was that was to keep stormwater runoff from going onto the properties along Spring Street, so I'm just suggesting a bit. It was proposed at that time, they should propose it, yeah, just to... Because this will be built up. If you've been out there, the roadway's already been built up, they have to build up for that septic system. So there will be a build with runoff that could actually go into the adjacent properties on Spring Street. So I'd like to see some type of a berm or a rail intercept that runoff, so it doesn't get away there.
Just, I have one question back to parking. What was the total number of parking that we had?
Parking?
Yeah.
They have at least, I believe there's four for each unit, I mean, two spaces for each unit.
In the garage?
Well, there's one in each garage, and then at least one in each driveway. Some of the driveways are longer, so you can obviously have four cars on those driveways, but the minimum driveway applies for two cars side by side.
Yeah, okay. And that's what's required, is two per dwelling, so they have one inside and one outside, so it would be...
Right. And like I said, like this driveway here, some of these longer ones, you can obviously get more than that.
Sure. Can I just, I was curious where you put parking on this street?
Yeah, I flagged that a little too, I mean, some of, there's at least two or three units that are pretty short driveways. Those driveways are all shared as well, and if it's predictable that not everyone keeps their garages clear...
Right.
Then I think one of the things you're going to want to at least think about is maybe some, because I agree that the streets are too narrow. But you're going to, I think, maybe need some pocket parking somewhere, figure out, which is obviously then going to go and affect the impervious stuff. But it seems pretty thin for this location, again, not a lot of mass transit. So I think you can count on two cars and a lot of bikes in one garage.
Storage shed.
Yeah, yeah. There's no, there's no basements as far as I'm aware, so...
No, I think they all have full basements, right?
Yeah. Okay, I didn't see that on the architectural plan.
Other than under the garage.
Looks like they're probably water, because they're going from top of foundation, 107 to 103.
Yeah, so it was made in a gated, so that would be...
Just a couple other comments, I mean, there's a lot of comments in my letter, a lot of them more detailed than... I know that you take care of it.
Plan detail stuff.
Yeah. It was mentioned in the application material that there was a water supply. I'm not sure if there was a recommendation from the water department to upgrade to a main on Spring Street or something. But I've asked them for documentation showing that they have had a water supply for both the domestic use and the fire protection right here. And then, obviously, they need to, well, I think that they've asked for a waiver. Your planning board rules and regulations, as well as the Hanson Water Department rules and regulations, require all these to be looked. And this would not be, that it may not care, then another one down there, so they wouldn't be looked. So they, you know, they're obviously asking for a waiver for that. There's a number of other waivers that they're asking for. There was three that were granted for the subdivision plan that they haven't asked for on this, but I still think they need them. So that waiver list is going to need to be updated, this waiver section, if they're missing anything. I have not reviewed the septic system. The way that the septic system is going to work is each unit's going to have a 1,500 gallon tank. That's going to go into a conveyance system, basically store manholes and pipes to a pump chamber, and then it'll be pumped to the share engine system.
So one comment you can count on?
Yeah, it's actually two, but yeah. Yeah, it's one large, one, two pieces.
What's the design for 100,000?
It's just under the 9,000.
900,000, 90,000.
That's why everybody has to come to sign. One of the rules and regulations of the planning board is that they don't allow catch bases to be located in driveway curbs. Because this was laid out as a subdivision, they were able to comply with that. But as you can see, here, here, there, there, there's catch bases in the driveway, you know, right where, in the middle of the driveways. So they would need a waiver to allow for those to stay there. I think that's the major end at this point, but I haven't answered any questions.
This time, I don't, I'm still trying to take this whole thing.
Yeah, like I said, my biggest concern right now is the drainage, just to make sure that's going to work.
Sure.
Yeah, no, that seems a main concern. You guys have any questions?
No, I'm taking all of them, like you, I just need to have a look through, see if you have some comments in the story.
No.
Just real quick, we received Pat's letter, we don't have any objections to his comments. You know, we have to update our schedule more, that's a real comfort. Right now, with respect to the water line, we met with the water commissioners three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and discussed a couple of things.
Counsel, anybody standing up? Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, we, members of the zoning board, several weeks ago, met with the water commissioners, we discussed the project. What we talked about was extending the water line to Rockland, Hanson Town Line. A bit of a change made down to Spring Street to improve it. We also talked at that time about looping the system with the water commissioners, the time to do what's necessary. Because of the way this is laid out, there's no benefit of looping the system in this place, and we happen to speak to a better one. And what they suggested is this location had additional hydrants, and that would be better for the water department to flush on the lines of the dead end water. Other than that, those are the two highlights, but we have no issue with Pat's comments, we'll adjust them all.
Okay. Would it be possible for the next meeting, we can update a letter from the water commission for the board?
For the board, yeah.
Because we haven't had any conversation with them, so it'd be good to see something. I guess I'll take public's, comments from the public, start over there. Ms. Kellerman, do you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments, I have some questions though. I have some questions specifically for Mr. Kellerman.
Yes.
Are there any one-bedroom units? Because I know originally, when we received the application that was going with Mass Housing, I had a couple questions, so I'll just kind of stack them up. Are there any one-bedroom units? And also, to the earlier question about the affordable units, are those going to be next to one another? And if so, and maybe you don't know, it might be Mr. O'Shaughnessy. And if so, where will they be located? Specifically, are they going to be located about in the Rockland Town Line? That's what I'd like to know.
I think that's a question for Mr. O'Shaughnessy, if you want to field that one.
There's no one-bedroom units proposed, the affordables will be dispersed throughout the development.
So they'll be next throughout?
Yeah, probably like one off, every four will be the fourth.
Okay, thank you. And the parking, I had had a question similar to what you would ask earlier, Mr. Perkins. It seems like if we've got a garage, and we've got these short driveways, and then we've got the road that's only 20 feet wide, this seems like a recipe for disaster. If somebody has a party, or people over, or any kind of congregation of any sort, overnight guests, fill in the blanks. And so, are we thinking about asking the proponent to have some kind of a parking lot?
I think that is kind of what we touched on, that maybe there should be some guest parking implemented.
Okay.
I, there's some overflow parking, more or less, just spot for a while in the neighborhood, just to allow for that, so that wouldn't be an issue.
All right, thanks. And because you can see people within the parking, Spring Street, whatever, it could be a nightmare. And then, last, last, I'm wondering, sidewalks was something that came up when Mr. O'Shaughnessy came to speak to the board of selectmen. Originally, the plan, I think, had proposed two sidewalks on either side. And now I'm hearing it's one sidewalk, and not only is it one sidewalk, it's one extremely narrow sidewalk that we've now heard potentially has got some safety issues. And I'm just thinking, if you're building two and three-bedroom units, it's obvious we're going to have people with little kids there. And that just seems like an inherent safety issue. And I'm just wondering if anything's going to be addressed to try to make that safer, so that little people and other people in the neighborhood are going to be able to walk and congregate, and we're not going to have to worry about somebody jumping to curb and hitting them.
I believe that the comments from the review engineer were that they recommended to either do vertical curving, such as granite curving, or something similar, concrete curving, to separate the roadway or the driveway, if you will, from the walkway. Either that, or to separate them, if you were to keep a tape card berm, to separate them with a big enough barrier of a grass strip that is going to be defined. So it's not going to all appear as one. If you go and pave a walkway right off an asphalt berm, it's going to all appear as one, and it... They pointed out that it was dangerous if a car were to go over the curb.
Yes.
But to separate that, I don't think the issue was with the width of the walkway, because I would think four feet would be more than suitable for the neighborhood. But I think it was really either the close proximity or the no separation between. I believe that's what the issue was, what the review engineer had commented about.
And thank you for that, Matt. But what about the sidewalk on both sides? If we have a case of a disappearing sidewalk?
I haven't seen, this is the first plan I've seen, but we can definitely get back to that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Weeks, did you have any comments?
Nope.
Nope, thank you. Anyone, you in the back, sir, could you just state your name and address?
I'm Gary Bennett on Home Street. We've lived there for over 90 years. Not me. Since the Rockland dump was mentioned, how far is it from the Rockland dump? It was under 1,000 feet?
Not even.
Not even.
If you could, if we just...
This property abuts the dump.
Yes, it abuts the dump.
Yes.
Now, you're also considering drainage, getting rid of wastewater that might be picked up from around your development. Now, the dump's been around many years. And as a retired chemist that worked in this area, I have things that worry me about contaminants that would be in the bottom of that dump. In the old days, everything was thrown in dump. Believe me, everything. Does this company have any plans on any long-term?
The project's two-way and boric acid plus two carcinogens were listed by TESS in 1993, I believe. I have the engineer's name, I don't have it in front of me. There's test wells along the town line in Rockland. I haven't been able to get access to the test results. I don't know if they're even taking the test results. So if there's something in the soil, we have test well, Rockland has test wells available. And again, the original surveys for the expansion of the Rockland landfill, which was denied because of the soil contamination. Now we're going to build a subdivision next to soil that wasn't good enough for a dump. Now we're going to have people who are going to have... Any one want to address that point?
I think the point's obvious.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am?
I also would say, ma'am, my name is Jane Downey, I live in that house that's completely surrounded by... There is, first of all...
What address?
There is a hall right here, behind my house, 36-inch drain. Where's the water coming, going to go? It's going to go over here? I don't think so, I think it's going to happen in my backyard. So if I dance there, how it happened, I have no idea. Secondly, I'd like to know where that extra three, the original plan was six acres, where's the extra three acres? They purchased six acres of land, the original.
Yeah.
So I'd like to know where the other three acres come from.
They go on the one with, the backside of one.
Okay, so know that. All right, also, is there a plan of where the water is going to come in? The water pipe?
For the domestic, the water supply?
Yeah.
That's going to be coming in, I would assume, on Spring Street.
But you don't know where?
It would come down Spring Street and enter the driveway.
Into the street? Is it under the driveway?
Under the street, wait, is that what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, through you, yes, under the roadway.
Yeah, but it will be under the roadway.
Also, the original group was a white vinyl fence, a stockade fence. That was the original agreement, so I'm not sure. Now it turned into a stockade.
So this is going back, I'm assuming, to the original subdivision approval?
That's right.
When this was originally eight or nine?
Exactly.
And that was originally a white vinyl fence?
That's right. And the only other thing I have to say is, I don't know who's going to be responsible, but I'm on social security, I'm 75 years old. I've had to pay to have my two doors realigned because of all the dumping, the house shakes. I've got pipes underneath my house split that I've had to replace. Who's responsible for all this damage? I can't keep paying. Who's going to pay? My foundation is cracked. I have a nine-inch foundation, and it's cracked now. There's still water coming up under my foundation. Who's going to pay for this damage? I want to know. And this is all since then. I even have mice in my house that I've never had a mouse in my living room. And now I have mice in my house all the time. You know, this is all since this started.
I, ma'am, I can't speak for the conditioning or health support it was in, or what it's in now, but as far as, as far as, I guess, liability of any damage caused by the development, I don't know if maybe Mr. Talman could...
Well, I mean, the developer would be liable, I mean, I'm not going to get into private...
You've got to pay a lawyer to make them liable.
Ostensibly, but what we could also look at, to the extent that there's more hard construction that would result, you know, with heavy machinery and foundation holes and the like, we could ask for or require a foundation survey for your property, a pre-imposed.
Yeah, and is water coming around up underneath this slab, it's a nine-inch slab?
Again, some of that may, or, I mean, I can't just tell what the causation is, but having a pre-imposed foundation survey for a foundation in that kind of proximity would not be unusual. would not be unusual.
Of course, if the water came and mice saw, ruined everything, about $3,000 worth of damage, seek on paper.
Is the, um...
Are we going to, is the contractor responsible for that? That was never there before. Now, I've been there since 1978. I've never had water in the hole.
So as, Mr. Shaughnessy, maybe you can answer this. So as far as the construction so far of this site, has the roadway been paved, anything? Is there any impervious material on this site yet?
No, right now, it's, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, it's, it's, it's rough graded, the roadway's in, the drainage structures are in, the basins are rough graded and the roadway's rough graded.
So, so there's no, there's no impervious material on this site?
None.
The way it's, so you've cut it and you've stumped a lot and you've put in the road base and some drainage places?
The yeoman's work, the yeoman's proportional work is done. There will still be some excavating for foundations, but I don't think it would be as intense as the roadway construction.
There's still dumping dirt now.
The dirt that they dumped down there was from septic system, it's got clay pipe and everything, whoever's doing septic system is dumping dirt.
I'd like to know where it's coming from.
Okay, noted, but, um, again, this is just, we're, we're running the hearing here.
He was talking about building...
No, I, I understand. As far, yeah, as far as the materials being brought in and stuff, that's, that's beyond my scope.
Did that be considered hazardous or comes out of somebody's septic system?
I, I can't speak for that.
I don't know either.
I can't have an answer on that. Sir?
Uh, Jake Campbell, 125 Glenwood. I think the vast majority of the residents here, um, have been in that area for some time. We all kind of pay attention and we notice little things because we've lived there for so long. And I have witnessed what these residents over here have talked about with, uh, water, uh, times of the year when there was never any water, then all of a sudden there is. Um, and I'm, I can, I can only imagine that all the big loads of dirt and fill and everything that's been going in and out of there for quite some time, to build up the property the way it's built up, it had to have some kind of an impact on foundations and, and the immediately, uh, surrounding properties, or at least on the Spring Street, the side of it. So I sympathize a little, and I'm sure they've gotten help. Just wanted to, let me know that I've seen that, what you're talking about, the water.
So, if I could, just, I'm trying to, like, catch up here. So how did it get to the point of this roadway going in? This was previously approved, correct? This was a previously approved subdivision?
Yeah, it's previously approved.
Or it is approved, the way it's considered?
It's approved as a new subdivision.
So this was approved for the roadway?
The roadway started, and now we're shaping it to reduce the amount of pavement to be contaminated.
Okay, so this wasn't something like that was started on its own? This is something that had permits in place?
It was, it was under permits.
And it was approved by, I'm assuming, the town, uh, Hanson Planting Board? And this roadway was, was cut in, lots were cut, stumped, and what infrastructure was there was put in place?
Correct.
Okay. Ma'am?
Erin Anderson, 328 East Washington. Um, just wanted to echo the contamination issue, only because you narrowed it down to, I think you were asking specifically, like, drinking water. And I wanted to make sure that soil testing is a big part of that, the soil is where the rainwater's going to leach from, from that area, because they're going to plan that. And just to make sure that all soil is included in that, not just drinking water.
Okay. Sir, in the back?
Chris Costello, 446 Spring Street. Um, if they're going to be doing any excavation for basins, quarages, units, is there going to be any requirement for soil testing to see if the soil, especially closer to the Rockland, the town line of the dump is, if that is contaminated and, um, what their disposable requirement will be? And that, um, we want to make sure that they're bringing in clean soil, not just the crap that they're bringing in right now that's filled with dirty ants. And then another question is, with the 40B, are there certain ADA requirements that need to be met, these, these requirements?
Um, I'm not sure I can answer that last one. Other ADA requirements?
That, that's, that's building code. The 40B doesn't waive any part of the building code, to the extent that a...
And does their plan show any, um, ADA specifications?
For these type of residential units, there are not typical ADA requirements that you would see on a commercial or public building.
Plus, I mean, the building's sidewalks.
There would be some old requirements for sidewalk access and that would probably lead to some...
And is that going to do that with the street? I mean, I know for ADA requirements, sidewalk has to be a certain width. Uh, I, I just want to make sure that if this development does go through, that all, all these requirements are here.
Yeah, well, uh, we'll definitely pay attention to that, maybe we can touch on that. I know, they, they're in front of us looking for feedback from us and from, and from the public.
Oh, yeah, get plenty of...
Yeah, and from the public to, you know, to kind of tweak and modify and...
And maybe he can speak for this, but have they tested the soil out there, especially where they're going to be doing excavation for old basins?
Mr. Shaughnessy, has there been any soil testing?
I haven't been doing soil testing.
I know you did soil testing for, for septic designs.
All eight parts were per test, the septic test.
Per test is different than just the general soil.
And what, I mean, how do you...
And if it's contaminated, I mean, there is a certain criteria that needs to be followed for contaminated soil. And then disposed of promptly, you know, especially if, you know, yeah, because we have the EPA guidelines, so I just want to make sure that that is implemented into their, or it is already implemented into their plan.
Uh, Mr. Shaughnessy, see if maybe we can, uh...
I'll, I'll...
We can look into that.
Yeah, Mr. Burris, thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thinking about this a couple of times, Joe Campbell, vested interest of 125 Glenwood. The plan that's being presented today to the zoning board of appeals and also to the public, is this the same exact plan, uh, due, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Shaughnessy? Is this the same exact plan that Mass Housing was able to weigh in on, or has it changed since the initial application?
So when we, Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is, um, when we submit to Mass Housing, we submit a conceptual plan. And if you compare the conceptual plan to what we have now as far as roadway and building layout, it's pretty close. Um, these plans here are a refinement of the plans we presented to Mass Housing, along with the architectural plans as well. So to answer your question, no, these are different. These are better than what we submitted to Mass Housing.
Follow up, Mr. Chairman, if I could. What would trigger, through yourself, the board, or council from the town, what would trigger a full-on further review of Mass Housing or reapplication if their plans were to change significant enough? What would be that significant change that Mass Housing would have to weigh in?
Mr. Talman, if you could...
It, it would have to be a complete reconfiguration. Mass Housing, who, I mean, from a municipal perspective, were never quite pleased with their level of due diligence. If you start reading about 40B, you'll, you'll find that that is a little bit of a concern for municipalities. So they would only check back in in the interim stage if there was a complete reconfiguration or some kind of new undiscovered fact that was so significant that they would look at it. Otherwise, it's not like they don't look at it again. You have to go through a final approval process post-permit. So if this board issues a permit, they have to go back to Mass Housing and essentially redo what they did on the front end as well, so they would catch any significant changes there. Again, from my perspective, not robust enough to address municipal concerns, which is why we're going through that exercise here to work with Pat's firm and we'll be, we'll probably be peer reviewing traffic. It's going to obviously be a few water issues, maybe some 21E kind of issues that we'll look at and ask Mike's team, um, the developer's team, to look at. This is where we'll get more review than we'll ever hope for from Mass Housing, because we, you just can't expect that they're going to step up and, and give that kind of review. This is where it, it happens.
Thank you.
Sir?
Kevin Johnson, 329 Spring Street. Um, so there's a problem with sidewalks, right? Two, maybe one, so there's no room for a full-size sidewalk or two sidewalks, as is, there's not room for parking, right?
I don't know if it's really an issue of them not having room, but just not, that's, that's...
Okay, so it's not the plan. It's not in the plan, right?
Correct.
Okay, so also, he said, it was about 100, what was it, 100,000 square foot? 108,000? And there was, what, approved for, or whatever, 70,000? So where's that extra 300,000 cubic feet of water going? So if they don't have room for whatever, not to the plan for sidewalks, for water retention by 30,000 cubic feet, square feet, whatever it is?
Yeah, it was, it was an increase of what, 25%?
Yeah, so where? So there's no room for that? There's no room for additional parking or not approved for additional parking, right?
It's not that, it's not that these things aren't, these are things that people are commenting on, the board's commenting on, that we're looking to get these items addressed.
Okay.
That's the whole, that's the whole intention of this meeting.
And it's also the standing water in the whole side of Spring Street, from the dump all the way down to Danians. I look at 329, last house on the right, in that culvert, there's no water flow whatsoever. So if there's already not enough water retention, where's that water going to go? Just going to keep sitting down the whole road and everybody else is going to have to deal with it.
I'm not sure which culvert they're referring to.
Guys, if you could, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
There's been a couple of references to a culvert here. I'm not sure if they're talking about an existing culvert in the roadway. I think they've really talked about it.
So that's...
Yeah, so, so along Spring Street, on, on this side of the road, there, there is culverts under driveways, most of the driveways along the street. So if you look up, there's a ditch and this culvert pipes where driveways cross. So, um, is this a matter of that the culverts are, you know, clogged at individual locations and they're not maintained?
They're already not maintained, so what's going to happen when there's more water that can't even be dealt with on-site?
All right, so, so really the concern is with the existing conditions of the culvert?
No, you're, you're added.
Your, your concern is added to an unmaintained culvert?
No, it's just in general, it's just...
Right, no, no, I understand, but I'm just trying to get to the root of the problem. It sounds like the culverts haven't been maintained.
That's not, I mean, yeah, the whole project is wrong, but yeah.
Okay, so the cul, the culverts are a concern and the additional potential flow to those culverts is a concern.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm trying to get, trying to get all the facts on paper for you.
And that's going to be gaining water, which is contaminated, potentially water.
Okay, and we have that as a note as well about testing.
Right.
Mr. What?
I interest...
Sure.
It addressed this at the, at the subdivision stage. Right, right in this area is the high point of, of Spring Street. After this, going in this direction, both directions, there's, there's no drainage on the streets. So everything is a country drainage where the water hits the streets from the high point, goes downhill to, to the Rockland Line and that way to Danians. And everything spills off into existing trenches that really belong to the town. Those, those are, those are the, those are the town's drainage. There are no catch basins anywhere, um, from the Rockland Line to Danians that would, you know, pick up water or run water.
That's the problem. You're adding a lot of extra water.
No, it's not like, they're not adding any.
Well, there's a lot of extra water now that the whole land has been clear cut. Right.
Well, we, that's a...
And now you're going to have all the...
Let him speak, please.
We can have some other time or with your, with your engineers, but because this water here, because it rains here, it doesn't necessarily means it gets into the drainage.
It's fine to come up all the rest of the area. How does that work then, like, typically?
Yes.
It's fine to be higher.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We can talk all night, but let's just one at a time, please. Thank you, Matt O'Malley.
So, Mr. Chairman, stormwater management standards, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, we can only increase, increase the rate of runoff or the volume of runoff from our site. And so if there's a little water going there now, we're trying to control it all on-site right now, Joe, at home, before design, capture it all on-site, but we're not increasing the amount of water running off of this site. And we do our stormwater counts. Maybe we can review that and make sure they're after it. So what we're saying is that true.
Ma'am?
Carrie Mench, 501 Spring Street, we're going across the street. We're not just talking about not enough water, we're talking about additional water for 40 minutes with multiple people living in that. So it's irresponsible just that they're not adding water. They're adding a lot of water to this area and they're adding it in this leach field in the back. There's a lot of water that's going to be added that doesn't exist right now, so I just feel that should be noted.
It's, it's noted. It's, it's on an application in front of us.
Over here, just going opposite.
Tim Walter, 528 East Spring. Uh, this one wet to begin with, this whole general area. Now with this development, the recommendation was to pile five feet of soil higher over this entire area. So what absorbed water in the past now has five feet more soil, putting pressure on it and forcing it off into our base.
I don't know if you, uh, I've read these into the record earlier today. This is from the conservation agent, so there is no wet ones on-site. This is not in their jurisdiction.
There's not a recognized wet one, but the ground is damp.
So it's an area of high groundwater, it's not...
Correct.
Okay, I, I misunderstood what you were saying. Okay. Sir?
Kyle Williams, 328 East Washington. How close is that leach field to their property limits? Looked really close, but a couple of people, their waste going, and leaches everywhere. And why couldn't it have been put on the other side, doing this, running?
Mr. What, if you could, maybe comment on that?
Because this one is not good.
As to, uh, it looks like it's 20, 20, 24 feet, 24.1 feet from the, I guess, the left end, left end property line. Can't answer your question on that. 24 feet.
Why, why wasn't it put on the other side, where it abuts not people living, it abuts woods, the old dump? Is it because the soil's not good enough or waste? So the only option is just stick it right next to the...
Chairman, we haven't designed the septic system yet, but I'm going to guess it is located there because that's where the per test showed the best soil on the site.
So, so it appears that that's where previous testing was done and they, they put it in a location where they had previous testing for soils and suitable soils.
It just seems like it's done without the care of the...
I can, I can tell you that that, that requirement of 24 feet meets, um, Title V requirements. I can tell you that from my own knowledge.
40, 40 units?
That the setback at 24 feet meets the requirements.
There's a, there's a required, there's like meeting requirements and then like doing the right things to, to represent the people of the town. And it's just a residence of the town.
I understand your comments, sir, and that's, that's something that we can give feedback to the applicant, that, you know, it is meeting the requirement, I have to say, but your comment of, out of respect to the abutters, is more or less what you're saying?
Yeah, the ones that are going to have to deal with it.
Right, so I'm sure the applicant is taking notes on things like that. Ma'am?
It's Stephanie in 337 Spring Street. Something a little different. I don't, I was trying to follow this caller in, Mr. Shaughnessy, with how many bedrooms, how many, with how many bedrooms? But without even having that total figure, a new topic, our emergency services with all these extra people being added in, I mean, we're just fortunate enough to keep our fire department, um, all the people on there. Are we going to have adequate emergency services for all these extra people? And what about like the town services, highway departments, things like that?
Yeah.
Schools, thank you.
Sure, um, that's something we could, we could reach out to and see if we can get comments. So when an application comes in at this board, it goes out to all the departments and we get feedback from them. So we have, we have a letter from the fire department that that wasn't, it doesn't appear So we have a letter from the fire department that that wasn't, it doesn't appear to be a concern of theirs, we can reach back out to them and see if it is, but that didn't appear to be a concern in their letter. It was more or less along the lines of the design, street names, those type of things they're concerned with, but we can try to reach out back out to them.
Just one more thing, they were talking about 30, 40 extra cars during peak hours, no one...
I think there were, yeah, I think there were, sir, if you could just comment on that again, it was just more on the vehicle trips per day, but I don't think they were necessarily saying 30 or 40 at a time. If you could just comment on that, on the daily trips of the vehicles again?
That's, so 30 to 40 during the peak hours, and that's for the hitting the site driveway, coming in and coming out. Not all of them would go south, just randomly, 50/50, half go north, half go south. So it would be an extra 10 or so going south during the peak hours.
I have a question to kind of snowball off that. So how does it work with condominium development and school buses, the school system? Do they go through the neighborhood, or will it be a bus stop at the end of the street?
From my experience, every town is different. I've just recently done one, they said they will not go into the streets, they need to bus stop at the entranceway, so the kids can walk down there, and they have a place where they can stand, sit, whatever, the structure, the bus stop structure is required and the board thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I think just the concerns of Spring Street being busy, I think that might be something to look into possibly with how that's going to work with students. Will they be picked up? Are they willing to go through the neighborhood? I would assume that they're going to have to, you know, at some point at least turn in there, turn around where the Rockland Line is so close. And then maybe if they are going to go through the neighborhood, maybe where there was comments on, you know, additional parking, overflow parking, things of that nature, that maybe there could be a spot designated for, you know, for pickup and drop off. Location for school buses. Ma'am?
I'm not sure if any of that measured speed in the traffic analysis, but that's something that I recommend you add, to be done.
Yeah, it was, and was it 40 per mile an hour?
It's posted at 40, Spring Street is posted at 40, and they're going generally the speed limit, they're going 42 to 43 during the two, during the days, the 48 hours.
During the day.
What day?
Full 48 hours, from midnight to midnight in the fall. On the Tuesday and Wednesday.
To comment on that, I mean, you got to keep in mind, the speed enforcement is not the zoning board of appeals in Hanson. So if people are traveling too fast on that road, whether you add...
It's not the problem, I'm just saying...
No, I understand.
...talking about children standing on the road.
I understand, but...
It's something that you should just inquire about.
You can inquire about it at the Hanson Police Department as well, if people are traveling too fast on that road. What I'm saying is...
I'm talking about for this project, sir.
Right, right, but what he's saying is that people in general, on an average, are going a few miles over the speed limit on that road, and if traffic is such a concern there already, forget about this project. If that's a concern, don't come in front of this board and have comments to us about it, because we have no jurisdiction. As much as I'd love to tell you, I can get them to slow down, I can't.
That's not what I'm asking.
That should be a phone call to the local police department.
That's very clear that it's not what I'm asking.
Okay, sir?
Kevin Kellerman, 493 Spring Street. In regards to the traffic calculations that were spoke of earlier, were you saying that the calculations are based off of 48 hours for the project? All the calculations to do with the traffic on Spring Street are based off of 48 hours, is that correct?
We took a 48-hour count on Spring Street. That was just to establish the level of traffic on Spring Street, so we didn't base any of our calculations of how many trips would be coming in and out of the development on that. That was just to give us a baseline of who's on.
So it's debatable what level of COVID we're in or out of at this point, and respectfully, right?
Yeah.
So would you agree that 48 hours isn't enough time to get an accurate reading on the Spring Street traffic on that street?
No, 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 48 hours is difficult, or...
Would you agree that depending on the day of the week, the traffic could be more or less?
Typically during the week it is higher. Typically during a typical weekday, it's generally higher than that.
If it is a holiday, it might go up, perhaps?
You know, it fluctuates within about 5% here or there.
So you agree that it could be different?
It could be slightly different, yes.
Okay, and then I do have another question as well. In regards to the original application for the E block subdivision, that was an approved subdivision, has that since been retracted to go forth with the new plan? Or does it have two projects essentially being, going after at the same time?
Mr. O'Shaughnessy, can you speak to...
The subdivision plan has not yet been rescinded.
It's still approved, it's got to stay there.
Is that appropriate? Right, yes, it's still approved. Right now...
No, no, that's not what I asked. They said, is that appropriate to have a current project approved and to disregard that project and go forth with a new project?
The property owner has the right to develop the property. He's received an approval for an A block subdivision. He would like to build a condominium development under Chapter 40B, and whether we rescind the subdivision at the end of the day, or we leave it as an A block subdivision incorporated on the condominium, I would expect to work with this board on that particular issue. I don't have a...
Let me see if I can answer the question. So you could have layers, so the fact that there's another permit out there isn't a consequence. There's a comment earlier that there are all these other locks. At some point, I think it would be good for this developer, if there are going to go forward with this new project, rather than having that layer to record a single plan that kind of gets them back to one lock. But yes, you can have multiple, multiple permits and choose which one you're going in.
So the question is, was the project approved and dirt was brought in for that project specifically, and then we piggybacked off of that and changed the calculations off of the soil that was already brought in?
Well, I think you heard...
To for a new project with additional houses.
I mean, the board's engineer is asking for updated information so that they're not just building their case from an engineering perspective off of the old data. We're asking to bring all the data forward, looking at the new development plan. You've already heard talk about, you know, examining what's there and what's not for topography, clearing, impervious surface. So regardless of what happened before and what's provided either useful or non-useful benchmarks for them to work off of, our engineer is not going to be satisfied until any discrepancy between that project and this project are reconciled.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is we're basing it off of the new, the existing street?
So this application... This project has to stand on its own. Yeah, this application is an application in itself. This is, you know, they're obviously utilizing the existing infrastructure, which, you know, is already there. I would do the same thing, I don't blame them. But this application is a completely new application. This really has nothing to do, we can comment on it, and we can use that as kind of a baseline, but this is a new application. This is not a modification of that subdivision.
If that's true, then how come the old subdivision has not been rescinded?
It doesn't have to be. It does not need to be. That's the answer, it does not need to be. And I would assume that if someone were to get a permit for something else, they would need to, at that point in time, you know, go one direction or another. They can't obviously go both. They would need to go in one direction or another, and that's really up to the applicant. That's not something that we can rescind someone else's permit. We have no jurisdiction to approve the permit when the planning board did, so we have no jurisdiction to do anything with it. This is an application in front of us, this is what we have jurisdiction on, it would be a comprehensive permit for a 40B. And to your question on that, it looks like this was done, was it June 8th and June 9th of 2021?
Yes.
Okay, so you would ask that question. It was done on June 8th, June 9th.
What specifically was that?
The traffic study.
Oh, yes.
So it was just done recently, so I would think things, we could all consider back to as normal as they're going to get in June. I know the town hall was one of the last to open, I believe Hanson was, and we've been open for...
But you would agree that school is out at that point, right? The most schools, I believe, are out.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I don't have any kids in school, so. I would think probably right around that time, though, yeah, if they weren't still remotely.
I believe schools were out.
Okay, we're going to try to wrap things up here, but go ahead, sir, one more.
One quick question. So the two applications, I guess, the early one that was for the eight units, whatever it was, and now the new one for this project here. The new one, if I understand correctly, hasn't got the, hasn't got the water from the water pump yet. Did the first one have an approval from the water pump, or was it just the eight units?
Mr. Johnson?
Either one happened.
I mean, regardless of, this new project is going to need approval and it's going to need water.
To respond, it's my understanding goes in agreement with the water department in place for the A block subdivision. And with respect to this project, it's going to stand on its two feet before this board, that's what we expect. You guys are going to vet it for the project, it's not the old A block subdivision, our 40B.
Okay, I think we're cutting into overtime here. This was, I think, an overall productive meeting. I appreciate it all, remaining respectful, one at a time. Ma'am, one more, go ahead.
I'm Christine Owen, 493 Spring Street, and I just had a couple of important questions I just want to talk to you guys about, and we're going to talk to Point and Town Council. I do have a couple of questions regarding, you said that the 40B guidelines are kind of, well, strictly with the Zone of Port Appeals, correct? Mass housing doesn't really get involved?
No, they, I mean, they get involved. My, what I meant is that you're not going to get the same kind of critical review. They look at it as kind of a, just to get you to the starting line. And then on the back end, they'll look to make sure that it meets generally, but all the really hardcore analysis, that's this board, with the exception of the septic systems, this board is not doing, that's the board out.
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for all volunteering for this position, but I am so inclined, as in butter, that I am questioning the validity of any decision to me if I could send for appeals. I think there is a lot of conflict of interest. Are you, I'm going to allow us to ask questions regarding that?
Well, this isn't like an interview.
Oh, no, no, no.
This is pertaining to this project.
But if you guys are making decisions regarding this project, can I ask you several questions?
Yeah, if you have any questions for the appointed or elected members in town, you can bring those up to the clerk, the selectman, or...
In regards to this project, though, can I ask you a question?
You can, not today. If you'd like to contact me on our own personal time, I'd be more than happy to share my knowledge and educate you.
Well, my question is regards to, like, whether someone has a conflict of interest on this board in regards to this project.
I believe all the members of the board have submitted documents with the town clerk regarding that, but you can check with them if you like.
Okay, and everyone has disclosed if they're related to the petitioner for this project?
Everyone has disclosed what they need to disclose to be able to sit on this project, yes.
Okay, and no one feels a need to recuse themselves from this board?
If they did, ma'am, I'm not going to keep going with the questions, but I have no problem answering them for you, but if there was a need, they would not be here tonight.
Okay. And Town Council is aware of that as well?
I'm aware superficially of the questions. We don't always vet everything, I mean, it's not our job to proactively vet each member's. I've had some discussions with the chair that are obviously confidential, and all the members have access to the same ethics resources through the state that anyone else, any other local official has. So I haven't heard of any concerns. We're obviously aware in small towns and that there's, can be conflicts, and I think the chair's been really thoughtful on it. I'm not going to say, not in the position of saying more or less than that, but I know that the board's been, the board has been conscientious about it. I would like to just point out, too, that, you know, in order to get someone in front of you that doesn't necessarily do this line of work in the area, you'd have to go to Maine, you'd have to go to New Hampshire. So I'm a builder, I do part-time building, I'm an electrical contractor, and that's why I'm in this position, because I have the background to make good decisions for concerned people like you, and that's why I'm here. You could stick probably plenty of other people in this room in this seat, whether you personally like me or not, I can make a good decision for you, and I have knowledge to back that up. And I'd be more than happy to talk to you on your own time and share that knowledge with you and educate you, if you'd like to contact me. Okay?
I think that we were just going to start because we have documentation saying that certain members on the board did grow up together on the same street, where you have documentation saying that, you know, some of the board members are...
Ma'am, if you don't have anything about this application, like I said, I can talk to you anytime, just not tonight. These people are here for this application, and that's what we're here to discuss, and I understand your comments and your concerns, but they're not related to this application.
I think it's fair to share by everybody, though, just so it's clear.
Yeah, sure. I'll entertain your motion to continue.
So can we just, just for housekeeping stuff, to the extent we want to bring someone to do traffic or otherwise, make some decisions in between so we can get some of the, facilitate the ongoing peer review? I trust the other board members would be okay if you sign off on signing up a traffic person or whatever, so we don't have to wait a full 30 days before we get someone on board to review something, because it does seem like if traffic needs to at least be checked out, so...
As far as, I don't follow you, as far as what, getting...
So otherwise, to, let's say, the board is of the opinion, and I don't know if they are, that we should at least go through the usual peer review process with traffic, and we don't have a traffic person signed up, that would normally take another board meeting.
Right, okay.
This would allow you, if the board's okay with it, to kind of say, these traffic consultants are good, they work with the town already, let's sign them up and get going, to save time, because otherwise we have to wait. Even if you identify one, and we need three signatures, so it's fairly typical to kind of deputize the board's acting chair so that we can move through this. Obviously, it's going to take some time. I think civil engineering is still at the forefront, and some environmental stuff.
So I'll make a motion to assign this to a peer review for a traffic study.
Sure.
Sir?
Hi.
Can I?
And I'm an I also.
Okay, great, multiple facilitated in between the sessions.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have a available date in Virginia?
Jay, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at a pretty crazy calendar.
The only thing I can think of that will have open is August 31st, and is that too far out?
That's too far out for me. We don't want to really push this out too far, because we don't want to get into the position of a constructive approval on this.
Well, I don't think here there's too much danger in that, and it seems like there's a bit of work to do as well. I don't know what, I'm sensitive to your calendar, too, Mike, but...
Mr. Chairman, Jay knows this as well, we worked on a couple of projects together. I try to work cooperatively with the boards as much as practical. To me, it's the best way to do business, and I'm not worried about a constructive approval at this time. If the 30, at the end of July, at the end of August, for you folks...
No, I'm just looking at that, that's 45 days out, that's, because if we have two at that, that's 90 days, so that was my link.
Okay, we already got three on the 3rd, and we've got, already got two on the 17th.
At 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
Is open? Now we're experiencing...
Yeah.
I'm a Phil. Now we're experiencing...
What was the date?
31st.
August 31st.
Yeah, sure.
So I'll make a motion to continue public hearing to August 31st at 7:00 PM. Sir?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you everyone for coming out.
Mike.
We'll see you August 31st, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.